Don't seem to dabble, but I will call the regular meeting of the Ridgeway Town Council Wednesday, December 11th, 2024 to border and ask for a roll call please.
Okay, Council Bradley.
Here.
Broger.
Here.
Lakin.
Here.
Skyler.
Here.
Skobel.
Here.
Mayor Proton Meyer.
Here.
And Mayor Clark.
Here. Thank you. And just as a reminder, Karen, since we have members online tonight, all our motions will have to be by local. That brings us to additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that goes us to the adoption of consent count. Is there anything on there anybody wants to pull off? And if not, it's a mention of some other. Motion made by Russ, second by Terry. All favor roll call vote please.
Yes, Council Bradley.
Aye.
Broger.
Aye.
Lakin.
Aye.
Skyler.
Aye.
Skobel.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Meyer.
Aye. Okay, passes unanimously. That brings us to public comments. Establish time on the agenda for the public to address the council regarding any item that is not otherwise listed on the agenda. Comments will make it five minutes per person. I recognize one of our favorite public commenters having just walked in. You've got some force coming back. Give you time to take your pedicle.
Yes, my timing must be perfect.
Must be. Anyone else have public comment either online or in the room?
Excuse me?
I'm asking for public comment.
Yeah, that's what I'm here for.
Okay, that's why I figured I just was asking if anybody else had any other. Stevie, other hands raised.
Okay.
Take your time.
Well, first question is, if you mix me all year, I've been here in January and haven't been here all year, so I don't think you can come back and say hello.
We always ask you, Kuno, always.
Yeah, I see it. I got a whole list.
Okay.
So make it easy. I start at the top. First of all, congratulations on making the trail through Ridgeway Park and to the school, the reality by pursuing eminent domain like I suggested a while back. So I'm really grateful that you're doing that because I think it's really important, not just for our generation, for many generations down the street. Now, in the same context, I personally think that Laura Street needs to be fully built out as a second artery through our town. Money for the traffic study that you're proposing this evening at some point in the agenda, I think should be better spent. Starting condemnation or eminent domain proceedings against Wolf Company to bring them to the table. After all, the condemnation in River Park is based on residential property and its values. The condemnation for Laura Street would be based on agricultural land, which I think is a different category. And I think it's also imperative that it's safe, it's wide enough to accommodate traffic that would then be directed off of Railroad Street, which seems to be a problem. Railroad Street could maybe at the end, when we get to the highway, maybe we'd have two lanes. One go to the left, one to the right. You may have to move the fire hydrant, maybe a lantern, but that shouldn't be too expensive. Should be something that we can do. I look to the budget meeting, the budget proposal, and even if we have over a hundred thousand dollars for concerts in the park, we should have allocated money to fix the culvert up there on County Road 5. It seems like a simple math issue that bound by Leon Street, we have a big huge area where water can flow underneath the bridge. Up above, underneath South Amelia Street, we have a culvert that's at least three feet in diameter. And up above, we have a culvert that's stuffed up, not maintained, and it's maybe two feet in diameter. No wonder every time we have a flood come down, we have an overflow that goes onto County Road 5, and that needs to be fixed more than once to get the gravel and everything safe and right again. Okay, let's see. If we have money for more staff, I think it was like about 20% plus more at Town Hall. We should have better streets instead, like all the potholes that we have going from Sherman Street, south by Taca Del Nar, but the bank, but the bookstore is extremely hazardous to go through there. I think we should maintain our streets way better than what we do so far. And another safety issue is the southwest corner of Lena on Sherman Street, right there in front of the Eatery 66. There is no sidewalk. So that connects the sidewalk from this highway over to the Eatery 66. There's about a 40 so foot stretch that hasn't been poured. Concrete has been left to ice and dirt and snow for the last at least five to 10 years, ever since we built the streetscape. I think that needs to be remedied. Whether it can be done, it just needs a little concrete. It's not that expensive, I could tell. And in the same corner, the street lighting on the crossing of Lena and Sherman, we should have lights on all four corners. Because if you look at it closely, you see that the light on the southwest corner doesn't really reach all the way over across to in front of where Unicos used to be. And that's exactly a spot where I got into trouble a while back, where I almost got into an accident because nobody could see me, even though I was in the middle of the road. So I think you should have more light on the busiest intersection that we have. And let's see, sliding anyone? I suggested something, but so far that hasn't happened. I could say again, you can maybe close part of a street by your house, by my house. I'm glad to contribute. And then the snow shoveling ordinance, I have a comment about why are we
Kuno, if you're going to address an ordinance, it's already on that agenda tonight.
I should wait for that.
Save your comments for that if you would, just because I think we have at least one other comment here tonight. We have a long agenda, so. Just if that's okay.
I will, okay.
Thank you, and I appreciate it. I'm sure staff took note of all your points there.
Oh, and I forgot something, sorry. Over here in the pavilion, we have for many years had two places to grill. For the last two years, we only have one place to grill, and the bare pretty container doesn't latch properly. So most people step over there and throw stuff into the trash. It doesn't lock properly. That needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Yeah, and one thing that stood out to me is your comment about the sidewalk by Eatery 66. I've always noticed that actually the sidewalk does go around the bulbout.
It does.
But if people cut it, because why would you walk the other direction to go the other direction?
Well, it's also a place where we've had in the past, snow power very high from the snowmakers on that corner. So it's now being used because there's too much snow there.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. It would make sense to just do the straight shot sidewalk through there. We'll let you know when we need you to do it.
I just finished the steps and Eatery 66, that way I got it.
Okay, that's good. Thank you for your comments as always. Appreciate it. Good to see you.
Thanks for listening.
Yeah, of course. Any other public comments? Come on up.
Thank you, Town Council, for listening to all those rabble-rousers and just having a platform for us to speak. I'm speaking on behalf of myself tonight, and I just shared a letter with Preston that I asked him to share with you. These comments and my letters to inform you of my resignation from the Ridgway Town of Ridgway Sustainability Advisory Board. More importantly, I'll share a few observations from the past three years in which I attended 20 out of 28 meetings. My comments are not intended as criticism, but constructive feedback. My hope is Town Council will establish a formal engagement process with the SAB, Sustainability Advisory Board, that elicits interest in the advisory board's work and guidance on structural process for this group of volunteers. The volunteers on SAB have put considerable time and effort into their work, and I have nothing but the highest regard for every individual on the board. I'm the fourth out of six of the original SAB members to resign. This should raise concern and merit your attention. All who have resigned, myself included, are passionate about this work, but also frustrated by the lack of clarity in regards to the process by which our recommendations to Town Council are heard or considered. I believe the four points I'll share here would improve the effectiveness of SAB's engagement with Town Council and moving sustainability goals forward and contributing to our regional climate action plan. SAP leadership. We elect our own officers as outlined in Exhibit A of Town of Ridgway Sustainability Advisory Board Authority and Procedures. This document states the chair or absence of the chair, the vice chair, shall be the presiding officer of its meetings. In fact, town staff have consistently set agendas and led each meeting, which is not in line with the procedures outlined. If Town Council agrees, the staff should lead meetings. More clarity on the officer role of the chair should be provided. SAB recommends to Town Council, SAB recommendations to Town Council. Town staff recommended at our November meeting that this year, that the process by which SAB recommendations to Town Council are made should be made during this five-minute public comment period and with the language that directly asks Town Council to consider tasking staff to take action on the recommendation. Fortunately, we discussed this at last night's meeting and agreed this was problematic for a town advisory board to deliver recommendations during public comments, which also allows no opportunity for dialogue between SAB and Town Council and limits comments to five minutes as per Town's guidelines. This conversation, three years into our work, demonstrates a very unclear process by which SAB recommendations to Town Council have been or will be communicated. If Town Council established a clear process, it would help formalize the working relationship and communication. This could be updated in writing in the Advisory Board Procedures Document. A potential solution was discussed at last night's meeting, which I assume staff will be recommending to Town Council, but ultimately it would be beneficial for Town Council to outline the process. SAB has discussed and voted on numerous recommendations to Town Council, which are all documented in our minutes. Only a few of those have been presented to Town Council, and each time we were advised by staff on a different process with unclear outcomes or updates reported back to SAB. An annual meeting with the mayor and SAB after the annual strategic plan is ratified would help with collaboration, prioritizing goals and establishing a work plan to support SAB and the Town's sustainability goals. We had a nice visit from John at the start of our meeting last night with a lovely gift of a book for each of us and gratitude for our work. But having a formal meeting at least once a year would support a beneficial collaboration and communication between the advisory board, Town Council, and staff. Working outside the box. Lastly, I'd say that these extremely dynamic times offer a more nimble action and approaches to how we conduct business and action. If Town Council were to consider using the Ridgway Sustainability Advisory Board not only for recommendations, but as a sustainability lens and a vetting filter for any decisions before you regarding the environment, it would improve SAB and Town Council work toward the sustainable future. Thank you.
Thanks, Angela. And I just noticed you copied me on the email, but you didn't attach the letter.
Oh, I didn't. I'll send that. My printer didn't work either. I was struggling at the last minute. Send that to Preston if he could share. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments and point taken on a lot of them. I think we could do a better job basically with the SAB and.
Be beneficial for all.
Yeah, thanks for your years on the board too. Yeah.
I have more to say here, I think.
I imagine so. All right, so that brings us to any other public comments? Anybody either online or in the room? All right, seeing none, that brings us to public presentations, item number eight, update from juvenile diversion. Wendy. Come on up.
I'm back here charging my computer. My kid's doing whatever he wants to do on that one at the fore. I'm just presenting.
So good. Welcome.
So Wendy, you can either share your screen if you have a presentation, or I have it here if you want me to bring it up to you.
I can do it from here. I'm already on, I think. Maybe. Might not be as sticky as I thought I was. There, no?
There you go.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. I have not presented to the Town of Ridgway for a while, and I wanted to come. You guys are part of our stakeholders, and we have an IGA with you where you give us an unagreed upon amount of money every year. So I just wanted to come and make sure that you guys were aware of everything we do and how we are doing our tax payment. So we have been known as juvenile diversion in the past, and we are now juvenile services because we do do so much more than diversion. And we do feel like helping the kids through their struggles of growing up, which we've all had, helps them to be more successful as adults later in life. So we're here to do that with all kids in the community, not just the kids who are getting in trouble. You guys know diversion as being a program through, it's legislated through the state where we have a kid that gets in trouble with the law. They get referred to us. It's kind of a second chance. We do an intervention. We do community service with them, different activities, and it helps them stay out of trouble. But we do do a lot more than that. So we serve all of the kids in the community through the different school districts, through the counties, through your towns. So you guys all know Shannon Robinson. She's been working with us for 24 years, I think now, and she's your Yarrah County. She's established here, and she grew up here. So she's your case manager, but she specializes in this community education and prevention piece. She's our prevention specialist and our case manager for Yarrah County. So we do offer community education prevention. We help to put on the mock incident in the spring before prom. We do the safe and sober after-prom parties. We do middle school lunches, internet safety, dating safety. We do a special thing with the eighth graders before they go into high school so that they see that going into high school and being a successful high school student is actually getting an AP classes and being involved in sports and clubs. And it's not fast times at Ridgemont High, right? But we have like, they see in the media that. So we take those most successful high school kids, and we come and we have lunch with the eighth graders, and they talk about what high school is really about and how you can really be successful in school. And then we have this early intervention piece that is special to San Miguel and Yarrah Counties. We're one of the programs in the state that does do that, which basically is we can take a kid and put them on a contract and get them some interventions and help before they're in trouble. Because we know the sooner we get involved, the more successful they are. So we're also kind of that little like seam of glue between the different agencies and systems where we can be a little more fluid, whereas like human services and law enforcement, and they have certain rules of when they can get involved and when they can't. And so we can kind of help fit those spaces in between when that's needed. So parents can call us and say, hey, my kid ran away last night. We're really struggling. Can you come talk to us? And we can do a kitchen table talk. We can do a contact with human services. Hey, this family's really struggling, but they really don't reach that level for us to open up a case. Can you help us? So we can get involved in those kinds of things. So part of that IGA funding that you guys do helps us to be able to do that. Actually, we're a juvenile diversion funding from the state. We got a whole $2,000 this year, so it's super helpful. We couldn't run our programs without you guys. And then so our next level is that juvenile diversion level. So that is actually breaking the law. They receive a juvenile summons. It is not a charging document. So they get that summons. It goes to the DA's office and the DA and us, Juvenile Services, Human Services, and your IST, collaborative management person. We all meet with the DA once a week and discuss our crossover kids with our kids that are involved in multiple systems. And we talk about what are you doing? What are you doing? So we're not making the families double up on things. And we're discussing what are the best interventions at the right time, at the right place for these kids and families. So yeah, basically, we like to have those conversations. So part of that summons is we have a juvenile court process. It's during that district docket. So it does go through the DA. The reason we ask for that to go through that summons process is if everybody's getting charges, like this one's going to municipal court, and this one's going to county court. And then when kids blow up, they blow up fast and they spin out fast. So we want to catch them quickly. But it's easier for us to, if a kid needs us to increase our interventions or make things higher, if they're all through the same court, we're all aware of them. We're all discussing them. We're all discussing what their needs are. Whereas if they have a case in Telluride Municipal Court and a case in Ridgway Municipal Court, because they do kind of cross and cross boundaries often, we're not aware of what all is going on. So that's why we'd like everyone to follow that same process. And then if they reach that level where diversion is not effective, or they have a felony level charge, they are now, it used to be known as Centennial 94. It's now Colorado Youth Detention Continuum. Especially over COVID, we very, very rarely hold kids in detention. It has to be like a sexual assault, felony weapons charge. They're a danger to themselves or someone else if they're in there. So that's another piece of our job is what we're doing now with youth is we are doing community supervision. So they might be under home detention. We no longer do have group homes like we used to have. Research has shown that it's more detrimental to the kids and the families to take them out. So we try to keep them in the community as much as we possibly can, giving them their interventions within their own families, within their own communities. So that is one of the things. It's 24/7. If I have a kid on home detention, I'm checking in on them every day. Where are you at? What are you doing? But it's just, I think, a more effective way to handle kids and families, and it's not as detrimental. So we went over, we have the CYDC. We have MTR, which is your marijuana tax revenue funds. Just so you guys are aware, those are not available for us to do blanket prevention with. Those are specifically for a kid who shows that they have an addiction issue. They're not even trying. So say I have a kid with an MIP of marijuana, and they're just not even trying to quit, and then their levels are staying really high, even though we're testing them weekly. Then at that point, we would give them a substance evaluation and then get them substance specific counseling, and those marijuana tax revenue funds are paid for them. So that's how we use those funds. So whenever we get a kid in our program, we do a lot of assessments on them. So we do AMAZI, which is a mental health assessment. This gives us red flags for anxiety, depression, suicide ideation, things that kids deal with anger. And then from that evaluation, if we feel like we need to refer them to counseling, we can do that. We do a human trafficking assessment on every kid, even if I was at their baby shower, because most of them I have been in these small communities. And I know that they're not being trafficked by their families, but I use it as an educational piece because it is a very high, Highway 15 is one of our major trafficking highways in the country. And we have had kids picked up at parties and found themselves in the back of a truck and junction. So I do use that as an educational piece with talking to our parents and kids about them using substances or being in places, always being aware of their surroundings and who's around them. We do a trauma assessment because we know that kids who have childhood trauma kind of work more in their lizard brain back here. It's fight, flight, freeze. And so if we know that, we can kind of do some special treatment counseling with them to get them thinking in the front of their brain a little more and being a little more creative and a little more trusting and trying things. We do do mentoring and tutoring referrals. So we work with partners. I'm on the partners board. Shannon is on the Voyager board. So we're involved in all the youth boards and try to help kind of keep our fingers in all the pots for all the youth and families. Our useful public service program, I'll get into that in a little bit, but we really believe in restorative justice. So we know that kids who belong are less likely to get into trouble. If they don't feel like they belong, or they feel like they're on the fringes, those are the kids that are going to act out, do more behaviors because they don't feel that they belong in the community or the school. So we want to make sure that we are doing activities where they feel, I belong in this community. So we do a lot of that with our community service programs. And even if they make mistakes, it's, we still care about you. You still belong to us. It's going to be okay. Because I think that's a huge part of here a lot with small towns and kids and families is when they don't feel like they belong, they don't engage as much. And you guys know our numbers, but of course, we want to keep kids out of detention, and the costs are super high. Even probation is twice of what it costs us to have a kid on diversion. One of the things that we're really happy about is we do get involved super early when kids are showing us that things aren't going so great. And so we usually only have one to two kids on probation a year between the two counties. So we're really trying to get in there early and get things done because we don't want them in the system at all. And I'm moving over, but we do supervision with those kids that are those higher level kids, and we have funding for treatment and those kinds of things that we're doing within the community. And we have the funding for the marijuana tax revenue and how we do that with our interventions. Juvenile diversion is statutory, it is legislated. We are on, we're one of the cool kids because we started this program, well, sorry, Bill Masters and John Mansfield started this program 35 years ago. It's our 35th birthday this year. We were doing this before it was cool, and we were doing this before it was legislated. And now because of programs like ours, it is legislated at state level because we know that we have a 93% success rate with these kids statewide, not just our program. So it shows that it works. Restorative justice. So when we work with kids, different than a crime was committed and then there's a punishment. We believe, we kind of do a more tribal kind of feeling of harm was We believe, we kind of do a more tribal kind of feeling of harm was done. Who was the harm done to? What was the harm done and how do we heal the harm that was done? Again, we want that kid and that family to feel like they still belong. They made some mistakes, but this is your tribe, this is your community. So how do we heal the harm? Through apology letters, we do restorative justice conferencing. So say they burglarized a home that was empty and didn't realize that that family was coming back or something. We would sit down and do conferencing with the victim and the kid and their family. And we sit down at the table and we come up with, they each can tell each other their story of why, what they were thinking. Victim can tell them how that made them feel unsafe and how it affected them. And then between the victim and the youth that perpetrated the crime, they come up with how to heal the harm or whatever that is done. And we do that with SMART goals that are measurable. And it could be sometimes I've had people say, I want you to do five acts of kindness. Or I want you to come and paint the house or it depends, but they come up with it themselves. And then the youth, when we do, we have a substance restorative justice. We have them come up with how they heal the harm that they had done to their family, how they heal the harm that they did to themselves and how to heal the harm that they did with their community. And they come up with their own ideas and projects with that.
Wendy, just a couple of times, you've, there have been the acronym M I P. For those who don't know, minor in possession is.
Yes, that's a minor in possession. So that's considered a status offense. So a status offense is any offense that a youth might commit that if an adult did it, they wouldn't be in trouble. But if they're under 21, they are against the law. So that would be minor possession of alcohol, anything that they're not supposed to. Thank you. And as I go through data too, I've heard that in my past meetings, like, can you explain what all these are?
Accidents are always.
I know. Again, we do the different screenings. We refer for individual and family counseling. I'm not sure what you're right, because I think they might be discussing doing like we have, but we have a behavioral health collaborative in San Miguel County. So anyone who lives or works within our county, we have a tax that actually gives them six sessions of counseling paid through that.
I think we have the same.
Do you guys have that now?
Resource or Tri-County resource probably.
Yeah. So we're able to connect kids and families to mental health counseling. Thank goodness for some of the work that you all are doing as well, with mental health. So that's helpful. And a lot of times, you guys have heard this, but our families with little guys, they read all kinds of books and they go to all kinds of trainings. And then for some reason, when they become teenagers, when they're really difficult and challenging and you can't change them, chain them to the pump, sorry, chain them to the plumbing, they, you know, they just kind of give up. I'm tired. I don't want to do this anymore. Or but they still need the skills because that is when I think parenting is most challenging, is when they're teenagers and they're trying to individuate and become their own people. So we're happy to help, like I said, with kitchen table talks, doing a contract, figuring out whatever it is those families need.
Do you guys do the positive youth development training?
Yes, we do.
I did that years ago and incredibly powerful. I wish I would have known a lot of those things when I had teenagers.
Yeah.
The teenage brain is just a different.
It is.
It's a totally different thing. They're going through changes that parents don't understand.
And it's frustrating. I was explaining to a parent the other day, they're like, how come I just explained this to my kid yesterday and he knew it? And then he went and did this and he knows. And I'm like, well, their brains are under construction, they're growing. And so it's like they have these detours, like a street, like streetwear, right? So you had it one day and then all of a sudden there's a detour in their brain path. And they're frustrating to deal with because you think they're doing it on purpose, so they aren't.
Right.
So one of the cool things that we have right now too is the I S S T team. You guys have that as the individual services support team. We work with human services and schools on that, and that is for families. They get to be the driver and tell us what they need. It's not systems coming in and telling them this is what you guys need to do. They look at their strengths and tell us what they have weaknesses in and what they need support with, which is nice because once they're kind of on their bike and riding on their own, they're more likely to stick with the things we've worked on than if we asked them to jump through hoops. So we found that I S S T is really successful. School advocacy, I used to be a school counselor before I had this job. So we really do try to help to, if kids are having a trunacy issue, is it a bullying thing? Is it a learning disability? Is it because the family needs them to babysit the kid? So we're always, we get involved with the schools on that level. And we will get tutoring for the kiddos. We feel like they're struggling and they need a tutor, we'll get them that. If we need to refer them to the school psychologist to be tested for a learning disability, we can do that. We can look into 504. So we're always looking at what's tripping the kid up. That's really what we do for all of them, so we can make life easier for them. And we went over all the assessments we did. These are some of the prevention activities that we do, again, the middle school lunches. We work really hand in hand with communities that care and Voyagers. You guys have an amazing program, Voyager, great team. And we do mentoring and tutoring and these are just a few. We work with Highway Cleanup. We do school district projects. We work with Adaptive Ski. The kids love adaptive skiing when they work with that. They usually stick with that even after they've done all their hours because they love it so much. The libraries are super helpful in working with us. Again, we want them where they're out there and the community is seeing them and the community can see what great kids they are.
We need to connect our Highway Cleanup with you guys.
Yeah, we'd love to.
More hands.
And we supervise all these different activities. And another thing that we do is we do college tours. Last year, we did a vocational college tour up to Mesa. We spent two nights in the cabins at Grand Mesa because we know that their hippocampus remembers things when you have like fun attached to it, like a high emotional. So we try to do a fun activity when we do our project so that, so they don't think about going to college when they're 18, but when they're 20, they have that memory of, oh, we went cross country skiing and stayed on Grand Mesa. Oh, yeah, we met and looked at Mesa and some vocational schools. So we did that. Four of our kids from that activity ended up going to Mesa that next fall, which was kind of cool. We're going to try to plan a Front Range trip this spring to get C S U, C U, and look at some things that they don't normally get to see. And then we do job shadows. Our local vet, Narwood, is amazing, Carrie Townsend. She lets me bring the kids to spend the whole day. She actually allows them to help her with surgeries. And it's kind of cool because they can see like, oh, again, trunacy, I want to be in that. Well, got to be in school and then they can talk to Carrie and see what it takes to get there. So that I think is one of the biggest pieces. We may have something in their mind that they know they want to do in the future. They have something to lose and they have something to work towards that helps them out. And the rest is my law enforcement training stuff. That's all I've got from there. I do want to show you my data for the last three years, like mostly this year, but.
While you're doing that, I just share that, you know, all my years, I've always been really impressed with what Juvenile Services, A K A Juvenile Diversion has done for the youth in our community. I mean, it's, it's so obvious that if a kid gets into the legal system and gets, has to go to jail and no matter how little, it just sets them down that path. And if we can avoid that in any way, it's just so huge, so.
I agree. And it's their narrative, right? It's like, what is your story that you tell yourself in your head?
Yeah.
And if they start telling themselves, I'm not a good, I'm a bad kid, I'm a troublemaker. It's not good. We want them to be like, I'm a good kid, I just made a mistake, it's okay.
Yeah, we all make mistakes and the restorative justice piece is really powerful too.
Yeah, I love restorative justice. And I don't know if this is big enough. I know I sent this to you all. Can I make it bigger? I guess I can. Why can't? So.
It's okay. I mean, I think.
So that that total diversion, that red bar up there, those are our diversion clients. There we go. I like to do three-year projections so that all of our communities can see that it isn't like one community has naughty kids and the other kids, other communities have black naughty kids, right? We want everybody to see that everybody gets their turn, where they have a crew that's a little rowdier than others. And that also is a way to show it's important for you guys to see that we need that consistent money with that I G A so that we can continue and know how much money we have and that everybody feels like it's fair. We try to base it on population a lot as well. But, and then the service hours, we kind of start, started to kind of calculate too, to see how many hours it is that we actually spend with these kids. As far as our time, because right now, I would tell you, if I could have anything and a fairy would come and give me anything I could have, I would love a full-time case manager because I work 50, over 50 hours a week. I have Shannon, but she's part-time. But we do do a lot of direct service hours with these kids. The marijuana tax revenue, you'll see that those numbers are really low. The reason for that, again, I don't want to put a kid in a system as a marijuana user unless I know it's a real problem, right? So I'm not going to put a kid, all of my kids who use marijuana in for that marijuana tax revenue money because I have to put them in trails, which is the state system. And I don't want to put a kid into that, even though they say it's confidential, I just say, I don't want to do that. So I will not use that marijuana tax revenue unless that kid has consistently shown me that they are not even going to try to quit, even for three months, just to get through the contract. If I feel like this is an issue, those are the kids that I put through. So that's why those numbers are so low. That again, that C Y D C are our kids that are actually in the court system or probation. So you see in 2021, we had no kids on probation. 2022, we have two. Last year, we had one. And then I broke down how many kids per town we're serving. So that kind of lets you guys know and see in Ridgway, we have 10 and 21, eight and 22 and eight last year. And I'll be crunching new numbers as of January 1st. And then you'll see all of our intervention activities. There are college trips, middle school lunches, South Core, that's another great avenue we have for kids. And then right now I do goal as well for kids that are in danger of dropping out or truant and they get kicked out of school. I have a group of six kids. I take every Monday to Cortez to Goal Academy. And they're doing like an online program that they have an academic coach. And then I take them to school once a week to make sure they're all caught up because online's too easy for them to become vampire children. And I broke down racism a bit too. I think that's important to understand and make sure that we don't have certain kids in our community that are getting in trouble more than others. We want to make sure that that is fair as well. So that's why I have that data in there. And our informal interventions are like what I was talking about, like the kitchen table talks and those kinds of things, little classes. They're not on a full contract. It might be a conversation here and there. And then I have our I S S T numbers there. Last year, we had 11 families in I S S T. And then those voluntary contracts, those are that, that level between diversion and prevention, right? So those are the kids that are getting referred that aren't in a system. So last year, we had four total. And then you can see here on the other side what our total offenses are. You'll see that our marijuana has gone up and our alcohol has gone down. So last year, we had no alcohol referrals and we had eight marijuana referrals.
Do you think that's actually a trend or is that just, it depends on the group?
I, you know, it's hard to talk because it changes so much. Alcohol is more like a rowdy party. It's more like, you know, the cops get called. You can probably speak to that a little more. Like if they're getting an alcohol charge, it's because the cops are getting called. You got a group of kids that are up to something.
Woodsy or something.
Yeah. Marijuana, the struggle, I'm doing more of that with kids bringing it to school. And it's just a different thought process with it. It's harder to get them to stop. It used to be that I could be like, try a diversion, just don't do it for three months. And then show yourself that you can quit. It's almost like this, it should just be allowed, right? And it's legal and it's safer than alcohol and they can carry it in their pens and their backpacks.
And the gummies and stuff.
And the gummies and the edibles. And so I think we're getting, most of those charges are coming from the S R O's or the administration with kids, them having it at school or on a bus, going to an activity or something like that.
Good to know.
Yeah.
It's a crazy world.
So I just wanted to let you know too, from my other meetings with our other stakeholders, I'm hearing that they would like to have a link to our website so parents can get, if they like it on the Ridgway Town website, that there's a link to get to us as well if they want to get ahold of us. So Jen Dinsmore and I are going to be working on that.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. Great stuff. Anybody have questions for Wendy?
Thanks for doing what you do.
Thank you. Thanks for allowing me to do it. So I love it.
Anybody either online or in the room have any questions for Wendy?
I have one question. I see a transgender male and female, but there's no like LGBT category.
No, I can, I can, but thank you. That's impressive. We can do, yeah.
I know there's a lot of work in our community towards that and probably being helpful for data.
And thank you. And that is something that we are doing too with the R N A. So that's another assessment that we do now. That's the new legislation with diversion is we have to give every kid that gets any charge, no matter what law enforcement wants to do with them, we have to give this R N A, they get a risk level on them. And that's one of the nice pieces of the R N A is it all has to be self. Like, like I am an African American, I am Hispanic, I can just assume when I do that data, they have to ask, say, what do you consider yourself? And then when I ask them that question, that one, they can leave open. If I had a kid recently that just said, I don't know yet.
Cool. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to a couple of public hearings. We've got item number nine, application for beer and wine liquor license. Applicant Chloe Charcuterie and Wine LLC, sole member Holly Kents, doing business as Chloe Charcuterie and Wine. Preston?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. So as you were saying, the town has received an application for a beer and wine liquor license from Chloe Charcuterie and Wine LLC. Sole member is Holly Kents. The premises is 616 Clinton Street and the trade name is Chloe Charcuterie and Wine. State law requires a public hearing before the local jurisdiction for application of a new liquor license. A notice of hearing before the town council has been posted and published. The premises posted, all in accordance with state statutes. All requirements of license application have been met. All fees paid, all forms received by the clerk's office. The applicant holds a four-year lease for the premises. Approval would include licensing the sidewalk on the north side of the building for outdoor consumption of alcohol. Approval of a revocable permit for use of the right of way for service of alcoholic beverages adjacent to the premises or the facility there is also for you later on in the agenda. State liquor law allows applicants to file for a concurrent review with state liquor enforcement while the application is being processed at the local level. This type of application allows the local jurisdiction to issue a temporary permit allowing the applicant to conduct business and sell alcohol until approval is issued by the state licensing authority. The applicant is seeking issuance of a temporary operating permit from the town and has remitted the appropriate fee. That concludes the staff portion of the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, I believe, in this case, the applicant's here, if you can be here. And a reminder, this is a public hearing.
Yeah, I was just going to say, since this is a public hearing, it's this sort of interesting formal process where we get the presentation from town staff. Council then has the opportunity to ask staff any questions. Then we open it up to the applicant to add any additional information or make any comments you wish to make. Then we open it up for public comment and then we close public comment and we bring it up here for a vote. So questions for staff first off. Ethan, we stay forward. Would you like to add anything?
Um.
Come on up, come on up if you would.
So this is Chloe. I'm Holly.
I kind of wonder. Hi Chloe.
You're my inspiration and namesake for this. So I come from decades in the food and beverage industry. And when I saw that that location was for rent, I it just haunted me like I couldn't deny. How fabulous it is and and the size of the space and I um have worked in fine dining. Virtually all my life and so um Ridgway doesn't have a wine bar, like low and behold. And uh so we're keeping the the food end of it pretty, you know, excellent quality, but relatively light fare. I am not competing with the course meal service that uh throughout town. Um we are going to, I just basically finished or fine tuned our um a wine vacuum system. So we can have upwards of thirty-six wines by the glass. And um be able to come in and enjoy wine by the ounce. So people can really explore wines, not just from Colorado, but from around the world and. Um yeah, have a just a really groovy, fun, educational kind of experience, a little intellectual edge for drinking establishment. So, yeah, I'm super excited and the response that I've gotten from the town has been amazing so far.
Great. And just so everybody knows, this is the old provision space.
Correct.
Um any questions for Holly? From up here. No? Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will open it up to public comment here in the room or online. Anybody have any comments, questions on this application? One once, come twice. Right, I will close public comment and bring it up here for a vote.
Well, Chloe, you be attending?
She'll be around. She'll be hey, right? She'll be probably hanging out in the basement. And frankly, it might have to do with my health if she's needed.
All due to prove the application for beer and wine liquor lessons from Chloe's Charcuterie and Wine LLC, sole member. Holly Klins, D V A Chloe's Charcuterie and Wine.
I'm sorry. Uh I think I heard Russ first. It's been really nice. Uh motion made by Terry, seconded by Russ. We'll call vote please.
Okay, Commissioner, I'm sorry. Uh Kroger.
Hi.
Lakin.
Hi, Skyler.
Hi.
Scoville.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Meyer.
Hi.
And Mayor Clark.
I don't think I go on these.
Nope.
Oh, you know. I don't vote unless there's a tie. All right. Um we call it the weak mayor form of government, by the way. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to our second public hearing of the night. Uh application Holland Ballantyne subdivision, a raised subdivision of lots twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, block twenty-five, town Ridgway. Location the same, address six fifteen Moffitt Street, historic residential, applicant Chris Holland, owner Chris Holland and Sarah Ballantyne. Take it away, Angie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Holland Ballantyne subdivision, while Preston pulls this up. Um is actually classified as a re-subdivision of lots twenty-one through twenty-four of block twenty-five. Um town lots at six one five Moffitt Street. Uh it's generally located at the corner of South Cora and Moffitt. So the request is for a subdivision of one lot into two equal lots. Um there's no additional development proposed with the application, but in discussions with the applicant. Um the intent is for a single-family home and a detached A D U on each lot. So this is a bird's eye view and it shows um a modular home, a garage and a shed. Currently only the shed remains. Earlier this year, uh a demolition permit was pulled. The modular home was relocated and the site has been cleared and graded, except for that shed. And then this is showing the final plat. I highlighted and circled a couple of points of interest. The yellow line is the proposed new lot line. Um the blue is a new easement, utility easement. And then the red is the shed, um which is labeled to be removed. So as you can see, it's encroaching in the new utility easement as well as the side setback. Um the shed is going to be used as part of the construction management plan. And then when a permit is pulled for lot one, um it'll have to be removed. That's part of the requirement. Water and sewer is coming from Cora Street and then uh electricity comes from the alley. So the subject property is located in historic residential zoning district, but from the master plan's uh feature land use map. It's classified as town core neighborhood. Um so it's in close proximity to town core where there's commercial activity, but it's largely um meant for residential. Uses such as single-family home and A D's. The lot dimensions are consistent with other lots in this part of town. Uh they meet all the requirements. The setbacks and easements are displayed on the plat as you saw. And the other dimensional standards will be confirmed at building permit. So um. From the Ridgway Municipal Code, here are the approval criteria for a re-subdivision. Um staff has found that all criteria have been met. All referral comments received have been adequately addressed. And all public notice postings have been made. Uh we haven't received any comments for or against the proposal. And at their October regular meeting, the this project was presented to the planning commission um for recommendation to town council. The commission unanimously recommended approval with one condition. The condition was to obtain signatures and pay excise tax and tap fees um. But that's already an existing requirement, so it's not really necessary to have it as a condition. So staff's recommendation is approval without conditions with this motion. Uh the commission or the council can also choose to add conditions to the approval. Um or deny the application or continue it to a specified date. And that concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer questions. And we have the applicants here.
Except any questions for Angie. Russ and I are sitting on planning commission that to see last last month, so. So uh you guys want to add anything?
We're good. It's taking quite a long, uh quite a bit longer than we thought. The fact that planning commission approved it twenty-nine and we have to wait over a month and a half.
Understood. We're we're looking.
If we could street or the town could streamline that, I think it would be well received.
We're we're looking at rescheduling the, resetting when the planning commission meets so that that people avoid it. So that's, we've definitely realized that that's an issue. Um. All right, so is there any public comments? Either online or in the room? Again, one once, come twice. No close public comment, bring it up here for deliberation.
See no issues. Same here.
I move to approve the Holland Ballantyne re-subdivision, finding the criteria set point. In Ridgway Municipal Code seven five two J three have been met.
Second.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Beth. Uh we'll call vote please.
Okay, Council Bradley.
Hi.
Kroger.
Hi.
Lakin.
Hi, Skyler.
Hi.
Scoville.
Hi.
And Mayor Proton Meyer.
Hi. There you go, unanimously. Thank you. Welcome. Good luck. All right, that takes us to policy matters. Uh item number eleven is a revocable permit for use of a public right-of-way. Uh having to do with the item we just voted on a minute ago. Through use of sidewalk for services and alcoholic beverages adjacent to Chloe's Charcuterie and Wine at six six sixteen Clinton Street. Preston?
There you stay with your presentation.
Yes. All right, uh.
Did provisions order that one?
Yes.
I believe so.
Yeah. And I don't know. Did anyone ask if they wanted to join the Colorado Boy Insurance number six ten?
That was my question.
Yeah, um there's already a, I forget what it's called, but there's a license that's shared by the existing Clinton Street.
I believe they were waiting to see if someone went into that space before submitting a new application.
That's the, that's what I must. Okay, yeah, because I haven't seen anything.
We talked about.
Okay.
So I don't know the answer.
Okay, so it sounds like maybe the.
Mayor, if I, I think procedurally you would need to. To deal with this item and then.
Got you, got you.
The collective could collectively come back to the.
Understood, just a, uh just a. Tangent question.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is not a public hearing, so it's just uh sent for us to debate um. That you've got the document in front of you. Um it's something we do as matter of course. Frequently and there's uh liability coverage and all that, so um. And a permit fee. Any other comments or questions? Any comments or questions for the public? All right, what do we think up here?
I think that's part of our focus on keeping people out and about on Clinton Street. So as long as they've met all of the requirements.
That's just stretching the sidewalk. That would be a good addition.
Mm-hmm.
So. Um.
Does this require a motion?
Yeah.
Yes. Just so long to approve the revocable permit right right of way.
Second.
All right, uh motion by Russ, seconded by Holly. Uh we'll call vote please.
Hey, um Council Bradley.
Hi.
Kroger.
Hi.
Lakin.
Hi.
Skyler.
Scoville.
I think Josie uh dropped off.
Okay, um Mayor Proton Meyer.
Hi.
All right, passes unanimously uh with one dropping a thought. Yeah, you might just know that loaded in that that um. Counselor uh Scoville had to depart. Um that takes us to, I wrote twelve, resolution number twenty-four fourteen, making certain findings of fact. And declared eligibility of the proposed annexation of a parcel of land known as the Delwone Ridgway Athletic Park annexation. Is that you again?
TJ.
TJ.
I, hello town council, uh I'll be presenting items twelve through fourteen. Um and I believe we wanted to open all three of those items, twelve, thirteen and fourteen for a public hearing.
Okay, twelve isn't a public hearing, but we can, we can loop it all together if you want.
I think I would defer to vote, but I'd recommend holding individual public hearings for.
Yeah, unfortunately because of the nature of the public hearing.
Yeah.
I would echo that.
But I think what Max is getting at uh is just having everything at once.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're good to go, Max.
All right. Thank you. I will give me a moment to pull up the presentation and we'll get started. All right, good evening, town council. We'll start with.
Uh sorry, real quick, Max, your PowerPoint's pretty zoomed in, or maybe that's on my end. All right, sorry, never mind, Max, go ahead.
Looks all right, all right. Thank you. Uh yeah, so as we just discussed, uh we opened up public hearing for all three of these items, uh just to be. He, since they're all related, it's important that we review them in the proper order. Um so we will go through a summary of all three of these and then we'll have three separate motions at the end. Uh so we're going to be first going over the finding effect policy. Um that should be resol- that's resolution twenty-four dash fourteen, followed by the annexation, which is the ordinance. Uh and then last, we'll do the zoning map and then the rezoning. So quickly, we're going to start with the process. I understand that this is a public hearing. I'm going to summarize staff reports of all three of those items in your packet. And then we'll move on to uh remainder of the hearing, discussion and motion. With background, the owners uh are the Delwone Group and the town does have ownership in uh the parcel. Uh adjacent to the Ridgway Athletic Park. Uh the applicant is Chris Hawkins with Alpine Planning. The property in total is three, about three and a half acres. Um and makes up, it's made up of three parcels. The request is to annex and provide zoning for those acres into the town of Ridgway. Um they, the parcels are located just south of the Preserve P U D. And like I just mentioned, the adjacent as well to the Ridgway Athletic Park that is uh owned by town originally. Uh so there are two major sets of code requirements we have to meet. Uh this is mostly dictated by the Colorado revised statutes. Um follow what I'm probably going to refer to mostly as the Annexation Act. Uh that established the petition for annexation. Um substantial compliance and all these eligibility requirements. Um it said hearing dates. Uh we already had the first. First reading back in November. Um and then as part of this process, we have to annex of. As part of this process, the annexed property has to be zoned within ninety days. So we're doing that as well here tonight. Uh within the Ridgway Municipal Code, uh there are a few procedures we have to follow within section seven eight five uh for the annexation. Uh where in that procedure does mention that zoning process may be followed during during the annexation procedure. And then also the zoning map amendment criteria in section four seven uh seven dash four dash three C. And that just outlines uh the criteria for approval for that zoning map amendment. Uh so we've gone a far way. Uh we started with the submittal, the applications were, you know, deemed complete. And submitted all proper documents. Uh town council approved a resolution in September sixth that set that first public hearing date. Uh for November thirteenth and then on November thirteenth, there was the first reading of the annexation. Um and at this meeting, we'll have the opportunity to uh address the zoning aspect. Uh and provide zoning for the subject property. The annexation eligibility, there are three primary criteria. Uh one, that fifty percent of the property owners shall petition for the property to be annexed. The uh that the property uh being annexed has one sixth contiguity to the town's current limits. And there's a community of interest for the town uh based on the application submitted. All three of these criteria are being met and it makes the annexation eligible. Uh as also part of the annexation procedure in the act, in the Annexation Act, the statute does not require an impact report. Or if the property is less than ten acres, this is the case, so we had to receive a waiver from the Eury County Board of County Commissioners. Uh and that was received after their November sixth meeting. The subject property was added into the urban growth management area and the future land use map earlier this year. And in the narrative, there are numerous master plan policies that are explained to, that are being met with this application. For the zoning aspect, uh they requested zoning is. Consistent with the adjacent zoning uh of those separate parcels for, so for example, parcel A, which is the parcel south of Preserve P U D. Is requesting the same residential zoning uh as the Preserve P U D to the north of that parcel. Parcel C is the portion that's owned by the town and that zoning district is a G C. And so they're requesting as well uh to have G C and a triangular sliver. Parcel A, the portion south of residential property is anticipated to be split into two lots into the future. And here's that example of those, how it'll be split. To be very clear, this is a conceptual map uh and must be reviewed during, in the subdivision process still. Um so but as you can see, it provides for some uh easements, uh right-of-way, the lift station is part of the discussion as well. Again, this is conceptual and needs to be reviewed as part of a formal subdivision process. Um the third parcel in this is parcel B and that's actually the uh. Portion that is only right-of-way, uh county road twenty-three, and that will be the primary access for the two parcels. Uh utilities will also need to be reviewed as part of the subdivision process. And in summary, these are the three parcels in question. Uh parcel A is gonna, is requesting a residential zoning, uh parcel C is requesting a general commercial zoning. Um the parcel A, that's south of the residential property, is uh gonna use that property for utility infrastructure and right-of-way. And then the the general commercially. Doned property uh is proposed for the parks and open space that. To be part of Ridgway Athletic. Uh in total, those two properties are about uh two point eight acres. Um so the annexation and zoning map had to have proper public noticing. Um for the annexation, all the necessary materials and fees were submitted to the town uh per uh the annexation. Um, for the annexation, all the necessary materials and fees were submitted to the town, uh, per, uh, the Annexation Act. Uh, that hearing had to be posted into paper and referrals were sent to the county as well as the special districts by certified mail. Um, I believe the waiver and the certified mail receipts are included in your packet, uh, but we have otherwise not received a public comment on the annexation portion of it. For the zoning map amendment, the rezoning, the. Uh, proper materials and fees were submitted to the town and, uh, this application was referred to a few agencies. Um, we received all comments from agencies and all of them can be adequately addressed, uh, one of the more. Pertinent ones being from the URA County, uh, planning manager expressing that, uh, updates to the IGA may be necessary as part of this annexation. Um, no public comments were received on the zoning map amendment and it was properly posted and properly notified. And finally, we're going to move on to the. Three motions, um, we're going to start with the findings of fact resolution option. Uh, staff recommends, uh, upon review against the applicable town standards as well as the Annexation Act. Um, that the town of Ridgway, uh, Council approved the policy resolution twenty four dash fourteen. Um, I provided the recommended motion below, the alternative motion would be simply to deny the annexation and move to deny that resolution. Um, I wasn't sure what would be a proper form if you wanted to do the motions now or all three towards the end.
No, I think we need to do this one now, because this isn't a public hearing, this is just a hearing, it's just a regular action and then we'll deal with each of the next one individually as well. So, um. Questions from, uh, council for staff or for Max or TJ on this, on any of this, on just twenty four fourteen?
There are none questions.
Yeah, both. Uh, anything you want to add?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um. So I can motion.
I'll move to approve resolution number twenty four fourteen, a resolution of the town, Town Ridgway. Colorado making certain findings of fact and declaring eligibility, opposing annexation of a parcel of land known as the Dalwinnie Ridgway Athletic Park Annexation.
Motion by Terry, seconded by, um. Kevin, sorry, um, I forgot to ask if, if, uh, there's any public comment, anybody in the room or on Zoom, have any comments? Questions? Okay, hearing none, uh, cool, Bobo, please.
Council Grandly.
Hi.
Council Kroger.
Hi.
Lakin.
Hi.
Skylar.
Hi.
And Mayor Proton Meyer.
Hi.
All right, that one passes unanimously, now we will, um. Have the first public hearing on the next item. Which is the actual, um, Dalwinnie Annex, Annexation.
Correct, and, uh. Before the motion, just wanted to clarify what the procedure is, uh, for the Town Council, uh, approving this annexation, options are. In front of you, but the initial zoning request is following this, uh, town may in its full discretion continue or postpone the public hearing. To specify date and time or to permit preparation of additional information if you would needed it, um, but here is the staff recommended, recommendation. Uh, the mo-, recommended motion is to approve ordinance twenty four, twenty twenty four dash six. Which approves the annexation. And then the. And then here your alternatives, deny or approve with condition.
Good, um, all right, so this is a public hearing, so first off, uh, any questions from council for, uh, any of the staff on the side? We straight forward, uh, any, uh, comments from the applicant?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, uh, is there any public comment, I'll open it up for public comment. Can either on Zoom.
I have a question, what's the date?
Come on up, please. Sorry, just so everybody hears on the recording and everything.
Well, what's the zoning density, uh, that this applicant is seeking for the residential part of this parcel?
Um.
There's no houses going on any of this. It's actually going to be used for the lift station and the right of way. And the residential area.
Okay, any other public comments? Hearing none, I'll close public comment, bring it up here for deliberation.
Right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I moved.
Good answer was.
To approve ordinance number twenty twenty four dash zero six, ordinance is the town of Ridgway, Colorado, approving. The annexation of certain real property, you know, this Dalwinnie Ridgway Athletic Park Annexation, generally located along County Route twenty-three.
Second.
All right, motion by Rush second by Beth, roll call vote please.
Council Grandly.
Hi.
Kroger.
Hi.
Lakin.
Hi.
Skylar.
Hi.
And Mayor Proton Meyer.
Hi.
Great, that passes unanimously. So that takes us to the final. Uh, item on this, the Dalwinnie Resoning.
Correct, uh, and before moving to the motion, uh, here's your, the approval criteria for zoning map amendment. Uh, the amendment is not adverse to the public health, safety, welfare. Um, and is either in conformity with the master plan, existing zoning is erroneous, or the conditions of the area affected or adjacent areas have changed material since they were last zoned. Uh, those are the criteria, maybe to approve off of. The Town Council may approve, approve, condition, deny, or continue the zoning map amendment request. Um, the staff recommendation. Is a, upon review of the, against applicable town standards, town recommend, uh, staff recommends that the town of Ridgway approve the zoning map. Amendment to the town of Council, uh, we do recommend one condition and it's mostly a. Well, I'll explain the propose, the condition is to, that the proposed parcel B not be true as a zone district because it is only right of way. As I previously mentioned, parcel B is only for County Road twenty-three, um, and the right of ways do not receive a zoning district. But. The recommended motion would be to include that condition.
All right, so, uh, again, questions for staff? Either from, from Max or the town staff? On any of this? Okay, um, just briefly, come on up, Chris.
I wanted to thank, uh, your honor, sorry, Chris Hawkins, Alpine Planning, wanted to thank TJ and his staff, Preston, town staff, just to get through this, I know there's a lot of hurdles and a lot. And kind of restart, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris. All right, um, any public comments? All right, hearing none, I will close public comment, bring it up here for a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the Dalwinnie Athletic Park Annexation zoning map amendment as requested. To the Town Council with the following conditions, finding that the criteria set forth in Ridgway Municipal Code seven four three C three have been met. The conditioning is parcel B not be attributed a zone district because it is public right.
Second, and just clearly, it's not a recommendation, actually. Move to recommend approval.
I move to approve.
Move to approve.
I move to approve.
It's, it's written.
That was.
That's, that's the, uh, that's the planning commission.
Admit that to I move to approve.
Okay. You're okay with that, okay, I second agrees, uh, motion by Rush second by Kevin. Um. Roll call vote please.
Council Grandly.
Hi.
Council Kroger.
Hi.
Council Lakin.
Hi.
Skylar.
Hi.
And Mayor Proton Meyer.
Oh, thank you.
All right, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
So thanks, Chris.
It's not, it's not a free thing with the, with the Dalwinnie Annex.
Yep, yep.
What are we gonna talk about?
So how do we have a, so we're to go back to some.
Just, just we, we do have some.
Don't get to the second.
Yeah.
Let's keep plugging away.
Yeah, we got a lot more on the agenda, um, so. So that takes us to. Item number.
Thanks, TJ.
Yeah, thanks, Max, thanks TJ, meant to say that, thanks, Preston, um. Emergency, uh, item number fifteen, emergency ordinance number oh seven, that's twenty twenty four, acting by and to its water enterprise, authorizing a loan from Colorado Water Conservation Board. To finance the Beaver Creek diversion restoration project and the execution of loan contract. And related promissory note to document the loan, providing the terms of loan and the details of connection therewith and declaring an emergency, Preston.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, so, uh, the emergency ordinance before you is approved would authorize the execution of the loan contract there in the patent. Uh, between the town and the Colorado Water Conservation Board for a loan not to exceed eight million, eighty thousand dollars, eight million for project costs and eighty thousand for. Uh, the one percent service fee that, uh, the CWCB charges. For cost related to the Beaver Creek diversion restoration project, uh, it would also authorize the issuance and delivery of the promissory note. Uh, and the execution of any additional documentation which may be related to financing. Uh, we're, we're working really hard, uh, in this final stretch of December to get everything in place so that we can close before year end. Bo and I had a call with Tom Peltz, our bond counsel just today, and, and there are some hurdles to get through, but we're confident. Course is optimistic, we're more confident that we can close by year end and that's imperative. Uh, because if we don't, we wouldn't be eligible to receive state, uh, disaster assistance funds, uh, to help the project, so. Uh, again, that's why it's so important to be close before December thirty-one. Um, happy to answer any questions, uh, but this should be the very last financing, making this ordinance before you all, uh, to get everything in place, uh, so that we can perform with. The hard part.
Get the project done, yeah.
Yeah, so. Sorry.
Yeah, please.
To, to piggyback on that, if, if the council is so inclined to pass this ordinance tonight, we'd be asking that. It's passed with, as Preston indicated, there are still maybe some backend hurdles at the, at the state level. So we'd be asking that with this, um. The council grants, legal counsel and special legal counsel the authority to, to button up anything that might be presented between now and the new year, so. You all have to have another meeting.
Okay, makes sense, thanks, Bo. Um. And again, this is a public hearing, so, um. First off, questions from council for any of staff or, or council, attorney? Do this. Again, pretty much have to get it done. Um. So then I will open it up for a public comment, anyone in the audience, either in the room or online, have any comments or questions about this? Okay, hearing none, I'll close public comment and bring it up here for a motion.
I'll move to, um, approve emergency ordinance number oh seven dash two oh two four.
Second.
With the caveat.
Oh, with the caveat.
With, uh, the caveat that Bo, Bo espoused about buttoning up loose ends.
Council, special counsel.
That's very, that's very normal.
Yeah, that, that works.
Okay.
Seconded with those conditions applied.
Okay, motion by Terry, seconded by Polly, roll call vote please.
Yes, um, Council Grandly.
Hi.
Kroger.
Hi.
Lakin.
Hi.
Skylar.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Meyer.
Hi.
All right, that passes unanimously, carry on, gentlemen. Godspeed. Uh, item number sixteen, second reading of ordinance number oh five twenty twenty four, amending subsection fourteen dash one dash one of the Ridgway Municipal Code. To add more specific regulations concerning snow and ice removal and establishing an assessment and penalty for failure to maintain sidewalks in the.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, so you, uh, read the title of ordinance, thank you very much, it's the second reading of that ordinance and also a public hearing, uh, first reading took place at last month's meeting. That. And as a result of the discussion and direction that took place at the August Town Council meeting, that's how this, uh, ordinance in its current iteration came before you. It's aimed at bolstering and adding more specificity to property owners' requirements and responsibilities related to removing snow and ice from sidewalks. Abutting their properties, again, you all approved first reading last month, happy to answer any questions and this is a public hearing.
All right, so any questions for Preston or any other staff?
Yeah, I guess I just want to clarify that, again, our, our typical way of, uh, managing this kind of stuff is complaint driven. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
And then this will take effect thirty days from being passed, right?
Correct.
Correct, just since I've been asked.
I just have one quick question, um, I should have thought of this before, but I didn't, um, for. If the property is a rental, be it short term or long term, will the owners be. Responsible for the snow removals or the tenants, or is this going to be worked out in the lease, um, and who will be responsible for any fines incurred?
Uh, that's a good question, Polly, and that's, that's up to the property owner to work out in whatever lease, lease agreement or arrangement they have with the tenant. Uh, but without the, the. Uh, read, uh, any fines or action, uh, would go to the property owner of this.
Perfect. Thank you, that, that was, that was the only thing that I realized that I didn't, um, think of before now.
Thanks, Polly. Any other questions for Preston or other staff? Uh, any questions from the public? Kuno, come on up.
Politically, I'd like to ask, why are we adding an ordinance to our charter that, uh. We don't seem to want to enforce some of the ordinance that we have on the books, even though the complaint driven. About my own experience in the last year, I followed your suggestion to put everything in writing and I did. And the first complaint, I'm not going to say what it was, but it, for the first hundred days. Of that complaint, there was no reaction whatsoever. Uh, that's my first experience, the second experience was when I complained about something else, it was over six weeks of no response of whatsoever. So it seems to me that maybe it's not really working that well. As a property owner on North Cora Street, which is, uh, over there by the Escalante Circle, there's really no traffic ever on that sidewalk. I think you need to, uh, uh, i- if you're gonna. Require people to move to snow, it needs to be described as an active area where people actually are walking on sidewalks. Because I don't have any intent of traveling over there on North Cora Street when nobody's walking there, it's a dead end street, it's not being used. It, it's, uh, right behind San Miguel Power. Over there, uh, it, it, it starts on Escalante Circle, goes south for a couple hundred feet and then it stops.
So you're not talking about your, your property next to Adam's property, you're talking about the.
Well, I'm talking about the, at the property up, uh, by the, the three, uh, residential, uh, uh, houses that are owned over there. So there's, there's certain parts of town, I'm just saying there's sidewalks that are not being used very much. There's a sidewalk up in our town, uh, on Martha Street that hardly ever gets used by anybody, uh, e- even in the summertime because we all walk in the streets. So I think, I don't know, maybe.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really think it's up to individual property owners to get to decide what streets get used and which ones do not, we're making a uniform code around sidewalks for the town.
I, I walk on that street, I, that sidewalk, Martha Street all the time, so. I, I think, and it's also something that changes over time as we grow, people will walk on sidewalks more, um. I mean, it's, it's one of those deals, in my opinion, Kuno, where. We have to treat everybody the same, we can't, you know, you've got sidewalk in front of your house, you need to keep the shovel. Um. It's, you know, I, I'm always amazed how many people don't do it and, and I'm. I, I'm, I think this is a good response to the problem, we, we often get people complaining about ice and slipping and falling and I think this is a liability issue that really does.
And how are you going to plan to enforce this and with, with, who's going to be the compliance officer or is this going to be part of the, uh, police department enforcing these complaints?
I believe the building inspectors are, uh, enforcement officer and we've got a new building inspector coming on, so. I think they will be seeing more. Compliance or more. More response for.
This was also designed to make it so it wasn't just a phone call to the property owner that said, hey, can you clean it up? This allows us to then clean it up and charge the property owner. So before, there really wasn't, there weren't any teeth to that complaint driven mechanism like you talked about, we could just keep making that phone call. But now it's like, all right, well, if you're not doing it, we will hire someone who will.
Yeah, I understood that part of the ordinance.
But that's the, but that's the point, that's why. Gives us, gives us a mechanism to actually act.
And likely in this spot, you're talking about, you see any complaints?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it makes it arbitrary, right, and really enforcing something by ordinance and only doing it by complaint seems a weakness, that's all I'm saying, thank you.
Thanks, Kuno. Any other comments? Hearing none, somebody want to make a motion?
I've moved to approve ordinance number zero five, pi, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Uh, motion by Rush, second by Kevin, roll call vote please.
Council Grandly.
Hi.
Kroger.
Hi.
Lakin.
I'm.
Skylar.
Hi.
And Mayor Proton Meyer.
Hi.
All right, thank you, that passes unanimously. All right, thank you. That passes unanimously. Um, and that takes us to. Um. Second, the. The document is twenty twenty five fiscal year budget and setting a property tax levies to twenty twenty five through adoption of three resolutions. Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. We're at the end of a pretty long road, started this back in August. It's exciting to be at this culminating point for the budget. So pursuant to our town charter. Notice of adoption of the twenty twenty five fiscal year budget was posted on September sixteenth, published on, uh, September nineteenth, and a. Public hearing scheduled for, uh, this evening's town council meeting. Um, you all were presented with the draft budget at the regular meeting of October ninth, state statute. I discussed the draft document and the five and ten year capital improvement plans at the budget retreat on October twelfth, just a few days later. Uh, held a public hearing and discussed all documents associated with the budget at the regular, at your regular meeting of November thirteenth. Renewed all documents at a workshop meeting not long after that on November twenty first. Uh, and then again, this evening, uh. Regularly scheduled meeting, a public hearing scheduled. Um, you all will be asked to adopt the twenty twenty five budget and. Asked to establish the bill levy for fiscal year twenty twenty five. So before you are, are three resolutions that Pam normally presents, but she is, uh, on vacation, so you're stuck with me this evening. But shout out to Pam for all her hard work. Uh, over the last few months, she's done a tremendous job. Uh, first resolution, uh, if approved, would appropriate expenditures. Uh, second one would adopt the budget, and the third one, uh, would adopt the property tax bill levy for certification to. Your county. Uh, the following actions must be taken, uh, just listing, uh, the resolutions. We have the first one, resolution number twenty four eleven. Second one, resolution number twenty four twelve. The third one, resolution twenty four thirteen. A number of other documents affiliated with. Adoption of the twenty twenty five fiscal year budget will be presented, uh, here shortly. That includes the five year capital improvement plan, the ten year capital improvement plan, the. Twenty twenty five strategic plan. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, and I appreciate everyone's hard work, uh, getting to this point. Just listed a lot of meetings. Pre- preceding this, so appreciate all the efforts. Again, shout out to Pam. I want to shout out Shane too. He went through a pretty huge exercise. Uh, doing the research and stuff for the, uh, vehicle portion of the police budget, so shout out Shane. Um, happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, and again, this is a public hearing, so first off, any questions or comments for staff? Those taking what else? You've gone through all the motions. This is a, a major part of our job every year, so it's always a nice culmination to get to this point. Um. Hearing none, I will, um, open it up to any public comment, either here in the room or online. About all these budget resolutions. You need the three?
We take them one at a time. We evolve them once.
Uh, it's all, because this is listed on the agenda as one item. We do all three resolutions, um, but you can ask questions about any of them. They're all related. Trying not to. You can still have questions, Terry. All right, I will close public comment, hearing none, uh, and bring it up here for motions. We'll start with the, uh, resolution twenty four eleven.
Move to approve resolution, resolution twenty four eleven.
Second. Motion by Russ, second by Kevin. Go call both, please.
Councilor Granley.
Hi.
Kroger.
Hi.
Lakin.
I'm Skylar.
Hi.
And Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Hi.
Like, uh, that more, that resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to resolution number twenty four twelve.
I motion, I move to adopt resolution number twenty four dash twelve, town of Ridgeway, program, some of the money and various. Plans and amount for the purposes as set forth below for the twenty twenty five budget year.
Second.
All right, motion by Russ, second by Polly. Go call both, please.
Councilor Granley.
Hi.
Councilor Kroger.
Hi.
Councilor Lakin.
Hi.
Councilor Skylar.
Hi.
And Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Hi.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Lastly, adopt, adoption of resolution number twenty four thirteen.
I move, move, adopt resolution number twenty four dash thirteen of the town of Ridgeway, adopting the property tax levy for the year twenty twenty five for certification to the URA County Commission.
Second.
Kevin, second by Beth. Go call both, please.
Councilor Granley.
Hi.
Kroger.
Hi.
Lakin.
I'm Skylar.
Hi.
And Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Hi.
Congratulations, everyone. Passed unanimously for the year. Created.
Aza.
adopted another great budget. Thanks, Kuno.
You can all see it all there.
Yep.
Walk safe on the ice.
All right, uh, that brings us to, um, uh, the item that, that someone has been waiting very patiently to be on his floor for a while now. Item number eighteen, interview of sustainability advisory board candidate and appointment of.
Oh, wow.
Preston.
Thanks for hanging out.
Um, Sharon is here. Sharon, thanks for being here. Thanks for being so patient, as, as Mayor said, and, uh, the sacred. The floor is, is yours to express your interest in the board, Mayor. Take, take it away.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for being here. Thanks for your patience.
Of course. Um, I'm Sharon, and I live at one sixteen North Cora Street, and I moved here June. And, um, you know, I've always wanted to be a strong member of the community, and I'm very passionate about sustainability. I started coming to the SAD meetings around the same time in June. Um, I have a strong background in sustainability, uh, education and work wise, so, you know, I'm interested in the position and contributing to Ridgway.
You sound like you're the perfect candidate.
Yes.
Anybody having questions for Sharon?
No, I'd just like to say she's already contributed a little bit to, to some of the meetings. And she volunteered on three things.
I volunteered, that's right.
Right, yes. She'll learn how to do that.
Being on the board, okay.
Well, I, I will say, we very rarely have people come and attend meetings as regularly as you have before they're even appointed, so we really appreciate that. Um. So, yeah, I think they have an easy choice here.
Thanks for wanting to be a part of it.
Of course, yeah, definitely. Thanks.
I believe we need a motion.
I move to appoint Sharon Redding to the sustainability advisory board for three-year term.
Second.
All right, motion by Russ, second by Terry. Go call both, please.
Councilor Granley.
Hi.
Councilor Kroger.
Hi.
Councilor Lakin.
I'm.
Councilor Skylar.
Hi.
And Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Hi.
Great, welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you. Be sure.
Oh, yeah. He's also, he's also.
I want to see.
This is the most.
Thank you.
Had the room a long time. Thanks, Sharon.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
No tell.
Thank you, Sharon.
All right, that brings us to item number nineteen, first reading of ordinance number oh three twenty twenty four, amending section seven dash four zoning regulations of Ridgeway municipal code. Regarding accessory dwelling units. Who's taking this on? Are you, Max?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, I'll present the ADU. Bringing it back to y'all. Give me a moment to share my screen. Hopefully, it's normal size. All right. Oh, sorry. Let me get through all that. Sorry. All right.
Okay, thanks, Sharon.
All right, thanks.
All right, so for item number nineteen, bringing back accessory dwelling units. Um, I'm gonna try to be brief, but I will summarize the staff report you have with you today. And identify some of the changes that have occurred since the town council meeting in September. And, uh, a discussion on, uh, specifically short-term rentals and their relationship to this ordinance. Um, this is a public hearing process. Uh, the brief timeline, uh, I'll go ahead and skip. We've been working on this all year, but, uh, back in September, we, uh, it was sent back to planning commission. Uh, October twenty ninth, we had a very long discussion and, uh. Continued it to the November twenty sixth hearing where it was recommended for approval to the town council. And for you today. Um, so. There are five sections to the ADU code as drafted, uh, and I'm gonna quickly go over some of the, uh. All of them, um, and I'll, but I will stick around for the ownership and occupancy portion, probably the longest. In section one, we had a very, very minor clerical amendment that, uh, we changed. The, um. Second section is dimensional design standards. Um, and this, we, there was some conversation about. How clear it was in terms of how many ADUs you could have based on your property. Size, and so we divided those two portions up, uh, to make it clear as to, you know, one ADU allowed and like what the sizes of those properties are. Um, along with, uh, some more language. Uh, clarifying what, when a landscape plan may be required. So, uh, that was the biggest change, is making that more consistent with the code, as well as clarifying. Uh, one ADU is allowed and on what site property. Um, the incentive section was also updated, um, and we clarified here that. An important one here is that in no case shall there be more than two ADUs on one parcel, but. Under no circumstances, my understanding. So that was the major change to the incentive section. But, uh, and then we also clarified language that may be considered subjective. All right, section four was the ownership and occupancy standards. We did update some of the language here, but the. Main things here are we updated, uh, one to specify three things. One, that the ADU. And a lot upon which they are located, sharing and undivided ownership. That was one that was around, uh, prior to updating this code. Um, third one is that an ADU may be used as an STR as long as the relevant code sections, uh, are addressed. And finally, if it's not an STR, then it may be leased for a minimum of ninety days. Uh, so those are the main things there with STR is that we wanted to, uh. We heard the public comment. There's a lot of public comments, planning commission and town council. Um, and, and based on that feedback, we, staff believes is the best route. Um, and yeah, and as I just said. The ADU section, uh, has something to do with STRs. What we heard was that STRs are utilized by. Some town residents to make it possible for them to stay in Ridgway, which was a goal of, of the ADU. So, um, but what we understood out of those conversations is that. The short-term rental regulations are, are separate in terms of the code from the ADU. So solving a short-term rental issue, which might be. Um, you know, avoiding. Outside investment from large, um, residential developers. Um, is not a problem to be solved in the ADU section, but in the short-term rental regulation. And these are the two sections of the code where those changes would be relevant. And so, uh, what we are recommending is that the ADU may be used as a short-term rental, provided that it complies with the two sections of the RMC. And finally, there is a grammatical error in utility, so we fixed that. In addition to the ADU code, there are two parts outside of the code that have to be addressed in order to make this work properly, so that. The definition for accessory dwelling unit is as follows. There, uh, were two definitions. We cut it down to one, but this hasn't changed from last time you saw it. Uh, and the second one being a table in section four, uh, seven dash four dash four. Uh, clarifying that ADUs are permissible as an accessory use in all zoning districts. Again, now it's something that hasn't changed from before. Uh, in terms of from the last meeting. Uh, all public notification has been completed. As I mentioned previously, there were significant public comment and feedback. Um, and so we. Received those and tried to address them. Moving into the motion options. The approval criteria for a text amendment are shown before you. They're also within your staff report. Um, and so with the first reading of this document, uh, the town council may approve, approve of conditions, deny, or continue to propose text amendment. Uh, planning commission has recommended approval at the last meeting. Um, the motion was, uh, that an ADU. Uh, a condition to the recommendation of approval was that the ADU shall only be used as a short-term rental. Provided complies with section seven, uh, seven dash four dash six and the short-term regulations, as well as section eight dash five, which is short-term rental. Um, the draft in your packet reflects this change and staff believes that the condition of. Uh, requested by planning commission has been addressed. Uh, so finally, here's our recommendation. Uh, that we, that staff recommends town council approve ordinance zero three to twenty twenty four. Uh, and ordinance amending these zoning regulations for ADUs. Here's the recommended motion before you. Um, I am available for any questions, and TJ is also here to address any questions as well. As I mentioned, yeah, no problem.
Uh, any questions for Max or TJ or Preston? It's been another one that's kind of gone back and forth a lot. I think we've, um, done a good job of responding to this public concerns and. Um, I'm pretty happy with where we're at now. I will note the, uh. That's the recommended motion, that motion in our packet says to recommend, so. It's, we want to approve, not recommend.
We just introducing?
Yeah, I'm, sorry, it should be introduced, should be actually. I'll move to approve the town council. Now, we'll introduce. I'll introduce.
Actually, a quick question, just to.
Yeah.
Cause we keep saying that we're going to govern it with short-term rentals. So basically, if a short-term rental permit is available. Someone could apply with a, an ADU, right? Is that what that means?
Yeah, yeah, one of the units is on the.
Yeah, that's right.
And it does, it should be.
Reintroduced.
Right, and then we would approve it on the second reading. Okay. Does that make sense, Terry?
Yes, we recommend, we're.
Introducing.
And we're, I move to introduce the ordinance.
Yes.
Neither of these are.
Correct.
I'll just to clarify, I would introduce this ordinance number. Oh, three dash twenty twenty four, ordinance in town Ridgway, a lot of amending section seven dash four zoning regulations. Ridgway municipal code. Regarding accessory dwelling units, finding that the criteria set forth in RMC swivel seven dash four dash three, D three have been met.
Second. Motion made by Terry, seconded by Russ. Uh, go, 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 please.
Um, Councilor Granley.
Hi.
Kroger.
Hi.
Lakin.
Hi, hi, others.
Hi.
Hi, Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Hi. All right, that's as you mentioned, I can't.
I just want to shout out the planning commission. That was, you saw the timeline, that was a long, long year working through AD regs. And Max, TJ, and Angie, putting a lot of time and energy, uh, working through. All things ADUs and supplemental stuff, so.
It was a lot of work. Shout out to Pam Foister, who's online, we're planning commission members. So, yeah, thanks, everybody. It was a lot of work, and I think we did a great job getting to the finish line. Uh, okay, so moving right along. Number twenty, item number twenty, review and adoption of the twenty twenty five five-year and ten-year capital improvement plans.
Thank you, Mayor. So. On the heels of, uh, budget approvals, you all are asked to, uh, review and adopt the twenty twenty five five and ten-year capital improvement plans. Both plans are organized by fund. They outline a schedule of public expenditures. They provide for large physical improvements that are permanent in nature, uh, that are needed for the functioning of the community, parks, infrastructure, utilities. Municipal facilities improvements, things like that. So, again, before you, five and ten year, excuse me, five and ten year capital improvement plans. Happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have questions for staff on this? We, again, within our hours on these, I think we're all familiar.
I move to approve the twenty twenty five five and ten-year capital improvement plans.
Second.
Motion by Beth, second by Kevin. Go call both, please.
Councilor Granley.
Hi.
Kroger.
Hi.
Lakin.
I'm Skylar.
Hi.
And Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Hi.
All right, that passes unanimously. That takes us right along to twenty, number twenty one, review and adoption of the twenty twenty five strategic plan.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So on a similar note, you all are asked to review and make changes if deemed necessary, but then ultimately adopt the twenty twenty five strategic plan. An updated version was shared with you all earlier today. Um, that was a result of the sustainability advisory boards, uh, really great meeting, uh, in this room, uh, last night. Revolving around goal setting. So the document was updated and shared with you all earlier today. It was uploaded to the town's website. It should be. The, the correct version should be on Dropbox as well. Um, as you all know, the, the, the plan is an effective policy document and a really important tool in implementing. Uh, the master plan and other adopted documents or plans, uh, spe- special projects of the town council, lays out the work plan for staff each year. Uh, doesn't account for all council direction, unforeseen needs or opportunities and other day-to-day stuff. Doesn't account for all council direction, unforeseen needs or opportunities and other day to day stuff. Or prioritize internal staff work, but really look looking to capture the larger special type projects. So have to answer any questions. On that.
Thanks, Preston. May I have questions?
Note that there's seventy eight items on there, too.
Yeah, we'll have to keep track. Pretty impressive. I've always been proud of that, the strategic strategic plan. I think it's for a town the size of Ridgeway. It's it's a pretty. Aggressive and and well thought out document and. It should be our guiding light for for all of our efforts. Any questions from anybody online? Last person we had in the room is our plan. Hearing their motion.
I was going to mention this in the. SAB report at the end, but a lot of credit goes to Preston for hurting the cats of the SAB and getting this over. Mining to not only manage the meeting, manage the previous meeting, but then had to stay late afterwards and. Plug these in. So it's a lot of love and beyond effort on Preston's part. It was recognized by the SAB folks as well.
Thanks, Preston, and I move to approve the twenty twenty five strategic plan.
Second. All right, motion by Poli, second by Terry. Roll call vote please.
Councilor Grandley.
Hi.
Councilor Kroger.
Hi.
Council Lincoln.
Hi.
Council Skyler.
Hi.
And Mayor Protimire.
Hi.
Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. That takes us to. Writing number twenty two, review and action on the order extending the declaration of local disaster in and for the town of Ridgeway related to Beaver Creek diversion. Once again.
Yes, sir. Yeah, thank you, mayor. Same as ever was, right? But we're at the point again to. With the need to extend the the order. Again, I do think it's good to have this continuing on the agendas that we can provide updates and make clear.
Thanks, Andy.
Me, have an opportunity to provide updates on what's going on with this project. But for an update, the NRCS through their emergency watershed protection program. So the federal funding side of things has come through and we're close to having an executed agreement with with the feds. Once we do, we can begin incurring expenses. They were clear that we can't incur any expenses before an agreement's in place. The agreement with the state for disaster assistance funding is with their accounting team and will hopefully be available soon for execution. And then you all learned earlier tonight about the CWCB loan. And I mean, I've mentioned it. I don't need to go over all those details again, but that loan term is for three years of no interest, followed by twenty seven years. At an interest rate of three point two five annually, depending on how much of that. So so in the next few weeks, once all this financing, these financing elements come come into place, we will. Look to prepare and issue a request for bids or some sort of solicitation. I guess it would be a request for bids for the engineering design of the repairs. Of the intake structure up there. And the the goal would be to select someone to design everything and then after that bid it out for a contractor. So. That's all the hard work, right?
Yeah.
So that's the update. Would recommend understanding the disaster declaration.
And question with the pending loan, the grants and all the other financial mechanisms. Pending soon, when when is there no longer a need for the emergency declaration?
I don't know the answer to that. Bo, Bo main, not to call you out, but.
No, I have no idea.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
So I think that kind of going back to the agenda item itself, one of the reasons that I'm helpful, I'm thankful that we're still doing this is. Like we talked about with the previous ordinance, adopting it as an emergency justified because we've got this ongoing. Declaration of a disaster, yet there's something that we need to accelerate at the state level in terms of trying to get that's funding in place this year again. Hopeful that this would help be some component. But then, yeah, as we go into twenty five, I'm I'm thinking that we could probably. Remove the emergency declaration just because it's hopefully not as going, not going to be as prescient. I mean, the funding will be in place and we'll start the construction process.
And I guess part two of that with the the thought there being a known date to where there's a need to rescind this. Does it make sense to do it in six months intervals and then rescind it when we have a need to rescind it?
Okay, I would probably, I mean, maybe Preston and I can confer because we haven't, but maybe. We have this on the the January agenda and I I'm thinking we might be able to resent that because. Hopefully, again, funding will be in place. We're going to initiate the construction process at that point.
What about the, isn't there also something about a temporary agreement with somebody to. Get some additional water supplies?
So that's something that that we'll be working on in the interim as we. The financing piece has taken a lot. We've been focusing on that. We'll be able to, that's a great question. We'll need to transition to, you know, figure out.
Just one of the pieces of.
It's just another piece. I don't want to be alarmist, but you know, let go when we have so much water, right? And part of that eight million dollar figure, if you remember from that letter of report, right, water engineers, there's a lot of. Earmark numbers for things outside of construction costs like getting someone to let us use their water. Right? You know, like senior holders, which is what you're getting at. So we need to, we need to start having those conversations, but. Now, once we close on this law, we can have those conversations, see what it might take to.
And I, and I, and I guess what I was after is that the emergency declaration continuing to that one necessarily, we don't believe will be necessary in order to. Make other things happen. Once we have this big piece.
Yeah, I don't think so, but that's what Bo's getting at. We can confirm.
I think we need to confer at the staff level again. I think I'm glad that this kind of continues to to stay on because. At the very least, it's an opportunity for an update to the council and to other members of the staff. But at at the same point in time, and and the nature of an emergency declaration is is just that for a strict emergency. So. I don't know that we want to keep it open and.
Well, at the same time, I would maybe play the devil's advocate and say, you know, yes, God willing, that will be in place before the year's out. We won't have to go through that hassle, but. My understanding is we can't actually start any any construction in a significant fashion until after run.
That's what we, that's what we were told.
Yeah, so I mean, I I think there's reason to to consider leaving it in place and because we, who knows what runoffs could.
Yep.
And I don't think, I mean, maybe there's a downside to keeping it in place in terms of. Somebody complaining that it's not actually an emergency anymore, but if it if it just keeps. The town and and residents and neighboring landlords up there aware that we still consider it an emergency that's ongoing until we can actually start. Repairing it. I don't, I don't feel like there's a downside to do this, but I think we'll leave it to staff to to figure out.
And I think that's a very fair point there. So, yeah.
Okay.
Another question that I I thought when I was reading the packet today that there was two requests for for giving. Excessive water use fees because of leaks.
In the consent agenda.
Oh, it's in the consent agenda. So the reason I brought that up was one of them had like ninety eight thousand gallons. How is that relatively significant to our monthly water consumption? I can't add it in perspective.
Yeah, right now, water consumption, or at least the water we're producing at the water plant is is really low. It always is in the future. I've been up to the water plant this week, but I think we're probably averaging somewhere around a hundred thirty five thousand gallons per day. Each day.
Each day. So that was almost the basis.
But it was, it was fixed. It's good. There are, as you all probably know, there's leaks all the time. There's old service lines. There's leaks that we don't know about. It all surface, right? So just go straight down.
Would a leak of that magnitude show up on a daily check of the data or is it only something? In other words, if that's one day's worth of water and it's close to, it's not exactly. Is there any sort of an alarm mechanism or an alert that says, hey, we have an excessive out of bounds water usage?
We don't have that in place currently, but I think we're working. Well, I don't think, I know we're working towards that. That's why we're. Doing the replacement program on the meters and MXUs and I think we're, Karen, you might know, like, I want me to call you out. I was talking about this with Lori the other day and she said there's maybe a hundred left that we have to do. And at that point, we'll be able to. Get the technology at our disposal to to check more frequently, just like crossing the button somehow. I don't want to misrepresent it, but I think I hear what you're asking and I think we'll, we're getting closer to having that ability to do that instead of just doing meter readings once a month. And someone not really knowing until the first or the fifth of every month. Holy moly, what happened?
And there wasn't there, maybe it was a budget in the capital expenditures for putting meter, water meter up at the plant. Do I see that somewhere? That's probably the place to check and everything.
It's another, it's another data point that was recommended as part of the water supply assessment, just the LRE assessment to. To just a better capture, better data points, understand what's coming from from the water treatment plant, tanks and stuff. Meter is been purchased and I I think it's up there. I don't know where it is exactly, but actually getting. Like a manhole in the ground and getting everything in place and getting it online is going to be a a pretty heavy lift. We'll do that in the spring.
Frozen ground.
I think it might be worth, I mean, just along these lines of discussion. We've got a number of residents over the years saying, you know, what can we do to monitor our own use and maybe do a. Public outreach via email or whatever, explaining that individual homeowners can buy. Equipment that they can actually put on their their intake line, their main line into their house. That they can keep track of the use, especially irrigation wise in the summer, but also to be able to catch.
Rather than catching the indoor meter.
Well.
But it has to be installed professionally, but I should, I should do that.
Yeah, I I mean, I just think it's probably a a good just public information campaign to say, hey, especially as we get into more. Drugs keep happening and wondering if one is a monitor for leaks. That's.
Maybe we'll bring this up in the SAB meeting. What is a way that the town can support, source, maybe incentivize. People to do that, just just to monitor their own use so that they can determine if they have a leak before that they say that at the end of a month.
So like. There's lots of. Guessing a bulk buy of.
A bulk buy or at least a source with maybe a potential town rebate or a tax relief or something to incentivize people to do it. It's just based on the fact that we're in still in drought conditions and you don't want to wait thirty days to find out you have a leak.
Right. And and with the water problem in Beaver Creek. So go ahead.
No, I I think, you know, there's some really simple ones where it's just if you're just monitoring an irrigation system, that might work, but. Kind of looking for a whole property. It gets, I don't know how realistic it is.
Where my water main comes into my house, it'd be easy to.
There's a fairly simple one installed down here at South, South Lena Moffett. It's right next to where the water line comes in and stands up about this high and all you have to do is walk up and look at it. If you know you're not running any water and it's moving. You've got a leak. So this is our private property. It's that little white rental.
It's at the corner then? I never noticed. One thing I want to say is we're a member of Colorado Waterways, if you remember that. And I remember seeing as part of one of their educational campaigns, something about. How you can install those those devices that you're talking about. I can try to pull or locate that and then we can do some sort of educational campaign. On that piece.
I think that'd be really cool. I think it'd be great, too. Okay, we need to have a motion on this for the standing of the declaration of local.
On you to extend the local, the declaration of local disaster in and for the town.
Second. Motion by our second by Kevin. Roll call vote please.
Councilor Grandley.
Hi.
Kroger. Councilor Kroger.
You're probably.
Sorry, the mute button was not working. Yes, I.
Council Lincoln.
Hi.
Council Skyler.
Hi.
And Mayor Protimire.
Hi.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. That takes us to number twenty three, review and approval of memorandum memorandum of understanding between Erie County and Town of Ridgeway. Regarding twenty twenty five operation funding requests, one bridge portion from county to town and future goals.
Thank you, mayor. So that is what's before you. Not much has changed from the twenty twenty four MOU to to this one. For twenty twenty five, I'll highlight a few items. The cost share for the multi jurisdictional, multi hazard plan. The town's contribution, actually each agency's contribution will be just shy of eight hundred dollars. The cost share for the Bureau of Reclamation Water Lease went up to just north of forty eight hundred dollars for each agency. And then the cost share for victim services, the victim services program to eleven thousand four hundred seventy five dollars for each agency. This is the amount that's that will not be covered by the bail and vogue grants in twenty twenty five. So those are some of the substantive, well, what I would say, the substantive changes on some of those cost share amounts. Have any answering questions?
This is always a really important thing that we do over here at this time to. Formalize our agreement with our partners at the county and continue our good relationship with them, getting. Agreed to to some shared goals and shared solutions. It's like mosquito control is always important. Any questions for Ted? I'm assuming that does update. She just ran us through. We're all reflected in the budget.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Russ.
Move to approve the MOU between Erie County and Town of Ridgeway regarding twenty twenty five operational funding requests for a bridge.
Second. Sorry. Second.
Good job, Polly.
I didn't know.
Thank you.
Faster than they really.
All right, motion by Beth, second by Polly. Roll call vote please.
Councilor Grandley.
Hi.
Kroger.
Hi.
Lincoln. I'm Skyler.
Hi.
And Mayor Protimire.
Hi.
That's unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to the professional service agreement between Town of Ridgeway and Ho James, Northern PC.
Thank you, mayor. This is an annual renewal of my services agreement. The rate, the rate, the hourly rate. It's the same for the town. The pass through rate has gone up based on our increase on our private fees. Which is the fee that goes to like development costs or something along those lines. And then the the meeting per meeting fee. It's the same. So really no substantive changes for the town. I'd like to continue to serve. It's a one year annual agreement.
Great.
Thanks, bro.
Thanks, bro. We appreciate you. Any questions from council for Mr. Nolan or staff otherwise?
I think it's quite novel that the rates didn't go up. It's would seem expected that they would. Just since everything else in the world goes up.
Yeah.
Inflation is two point seven percent. Not suggesting we change anything.
I move, we approve the professional servicing agreement between the Town of Ridgeway and Ho James.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Beth, second by Kevin. Roll call vote please.
Councilor Grandley.
Hi.
Kroger.
Hi.
Lincoln.
Hi. Skyler.
Hi.
Mayor Protimire.
Bye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. That takes us to the. Consideration and action on compensation adjustment for town managers as a result of the annual performance evaluation. We gave Preston his evaluation in executive session last month. And now is the time we need to talk about compensation adjustment. Preston, I believe you had a, you gave us. You've given us in the past a proposal for how you'd like to move forward on compensation this year. Give us that again.
Yes, sir. The request is to take the town manager to step four of the town, step four of the Town of Ridgeway's twenty twenty five step salary structure. For the town manager position.
Questions, we're all on the same page on this, right?
Yep.
Was there a retroactive format or just? Just, I think, didn't we decide that you'd already gone retroactive? For this year or not? I can't remember.
That hasn't happened for this year. Thanks for the reminder, Russ. Yeah, part of the request was to consider making it retroactive to at least six months of. Twenty 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 four.
And then the other thing was to to keep this from having to happen again, that we we do it as of January for the. The next adjustment, right?
Right, in line with like everybody else, like all the rest of that.
Right. Okay.
I appreciate the consideration.
Absolutely. We appreciate you. There's very few people online anymore, but you want to have any questions, comments on this? Uh, is there a motion?
I move to approve Preston's pay increase to step four.
Yeah. And making it retroactive.
And making it retroactive for the six months per his request.
Second. And I did, sorry to butt in, but I think I was trying to find Pam's. Give me a second. See now for coming here so we don't have to make next year's retroactive as well when we get to. Give me a second. Yeah, so um Pam wrote to me earlier that that twenty twenty-four grade fifteen step four, that's what you you asked for, right?
Yes.
Um, and that we also included in this motion, I would ask for you amend your motion to uh for twenty twenty-five adjust to grade fifteen step five effective January first.
Okay.
So.
amended.
Go through this again next year and just take care.
Second.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Preston?
Sir.
Yeah, you bet. Uh, roll call vote please.
Counselor Grandley.
Aye.
Counselor Kroger.
Aye.
Counselor Lake.
Aye.
Counselor Skylar.
Aye.
And Mayor Proton Meyer.
Aye. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. As I say, we we appreciate you more than we can say. And what we've gone through pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Um, that's takes us to town manager's report and then any council committee reports. But Preston, highlight whatever you want for us from your.
I'll highlight a few things that you're hearing me talk already, but I don't know, a party on Saturday. Boy, I'll make it. It'll be great. Granular activated carbon projects. Uh, I'm sure you read there on the on the first page of the report. I won't read that whole thing. I will just uh say that uh poor Steven and Bobby and Rodney. What they're doing right now is they're pouring the media into that big old tank and there's not an easy way to do it. The bags are like fifteen or twenty pounds and they have to, it's like a big old ladder. It's like a uh like a row, like handing the bag and stuff. And Steven's down in there with a A ninety-five mask getting the bag and like dumping it in the correct compartment and such. The irony of the story is at the end of every day, they look like they're wearing mascara and they're just covered.
Wow.
I I would take a picture because I wouldn't do that to them, but.
They're activated.
They're activated. It's exciting to see, but shout out to them for all that.
They're going to be bored. Fully system.
We asked filter tech, uh, the filter tech folks if they had a suggestion or recommendation for making it easier or streamlined and they really said that's.
It's a daily thing?
No, 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 no. It's, I mean, it's just a a ton of media to get in there initially and then we'll see how often we have to replace it, though, is like every five years or something. Always. But it's exciting to see now.
Well, thanks for that report. That's exciting.
And then a couple more things. Shout out to uh to Chris and Rodney for all their uh work sampling uh during our time as part of the uh well, now as part of an emergency site, but through the wastewater surveillance program through the state. Joyce provided a really great status, project status for the Ridgeway Light Industrial, specifically the Lower Street build out. Sure, you all looked over there and see that that home drag strip coming down all the way down the railroad street when you're in the.
Call that.
Yeah.
It's fun with.
You're right. It's like, um, there's still more to be done and it won't be open uh anytime soon. Uh, more work to be done in the spring. Don't leave it at that. There's plenty more in here, but uh those are some of the things to highlight.
Great. Thank you, Preston. Anyone having questions for Preston? I'm going to this. Since me and you are all, is this the the final video? This is the final. Like the last thing I asked her to do is add some courses, you know, strategically located and while left the panel that's on the front of that stairwell's part of the structure and then there's some in the upper right main part and uh I believe that um Tara is drafting a press release that will be that'll sort of sum up the whole process that will be released with this um final uh rendering and explain a lot of the process and um try to help people understand just just how we got to where we are. It's I continue, continue to be amazed at how public art just stirs people up and gets people all whipped up when this is just going to be the most beautiful thing. I mean, to me, it's it's the culmination of making this building really a major part of downtown and making it really attractive. I I can't wait to come around the corner and see that completed. It's finally done.
It's gorgeous. And I um I shared it with Kate and Derek Jones who live above Kate's place and they are stoked.
They did not. Thank you. Um, I know my neighbor, Nerith Nimroff, who's at local art, she shared it with some of her friends and got comments of all the types, but um uh Julia, the artist, did some great job of including a lot of local um for Ivana, there still remain a couple um ornamentals, but as she said, that's you, you walk around town, you look at people's gardens, those flowers are in their garden. So um, there's a little bit of both. Um, and she added all the birds and things. I I just think it looks great. Um, I'm also really excited about the banner pole project. I think that uh I can't, I can't wait. Is there something that will be coming before council on actually implementing something like this or?
The banner thing?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, eventually.
Yeah.
At this point, all we've done is learn about Neaker.
Getting spun up on it, yeah.
And then now it seems to everybody here that could be something we need to do. So, yeah, we'll have to um, you know, pinpoint location and most likely get an agreement in place with with the property owner on one side of the bear. We have more to learn. Yeah, there'll be something to come before you.
Cool. The the, to me, the trick is going to be finding the the ideal location where we can um locate the poles on private property or possibly on our property on one side if you stand by the park. Um I I think personally, I'd rather see it up closer to Cora Lower Street, but um we have a lot of, lot of work to do to kind of explore options. Um, but as long as the poles themselves are outside the right of way and banner has climbed twenty-two feet, C dot theoretically doesn't have any problem with it.
That's what we, that's what has been touted to us.
So it, for us, it's it's finding the right location and getting the the property owners to look for this on.
Would this, would this be a um a static sign? I mean, would it change periodically?
Yeah.
Events and things?
Yes.
Would it change? Sure. Multiple versions that we purchase fall out first time of the year.
We would have to get a rule seat out every time we change it, which is kind of tedious, but regardless, it's so it's something.
So it's exciting. It's cool.
I I envisioned something like what they've done in Neaker where there's a major, a main part of a sign that always says welcome to Ridgeway or think outside or something. And then during specific events, we can add a small addition to it on the bottom or something like that. But.
I can think of a few organizations that would love to have banners.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Events.
Well, Film Festival was a really incredible hit, success.
As was Noel Night.
As was Noel Night this last.
And do you want to know? I don't necessarily agree with it, but I've had multiple complaints about the traffic backup from the parade. And I will tell you that my response was, we'll just get back to town earlier and come to the parade. Um, but I just, I do want to know for for the sake of sharing the information.
Yeah. Well, it it was great to have the parade back in in uh existence, however you want to put it. Um, I can't remember the last time. We haven't done it in a number of years.
Because of pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID, probably.
Yeah, absolutely.
I uh.
Back when the town was right there.
Yeah, before, yeah, when Pam and and kind of in cooperation with the chamber, mostly two cameras, right? Um, I honestly was surprised that we had approved a parade route that it would come back down wrong way on Cora, I mean, on Lena. Um, and uh realized that that was approved at the August meeting. I think I was away, not done.
I think I just stopped parade. It's so cool.
I think we kind of let that slip. So I now that, and it it was way bigger than anyone we've had before. Um, we need to figure out uh, you know, pacing and I think there's some work to be done to fine tune it and probably fine tune the route too, so that the amount of time it's the parade's on the highway is reduced. And um in the past, it would, it was go up the highway, come down Cora Laura, um down Clinton to Lena and then go left on Lena and went back around the park that way. And then it didn't have to go back from highway. Um, the fact that it had to go back on the highway and everybody had to wait for the tail end of the parade to get past Lena Street to be able to go back down the highway. That extended it quite a bit. So.
So what I can say is that we're looking at cleaning up the route, not necessarily like changing it, but cleaning it. Okay.
Yeah.
And shout out to the community involvement within that parade because
Yeah.
Everybody, everybody wanted to be a part of that parade.
Yes. No, it was the biggest parade I've seen.
Yeah.
That was awesome.
Without a doubt. Yeah.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
So initially, we, uh, initially, when we discussed that with the chamber, I outlined to them that I did not want them coming back on the Sherman one pass. Um, and uh they opted to not take my recommendations. And so I left it up to, and then they were supposed to, my understanding after I got the second drafting of the route, they, um, I was under the understanding they were going to go on Cora and back down and not Lena. And then I communicated to them um about one of the issues with that was the traffic from the side streets and I had indicated to them that I had enough officers to do traffic on Sherman but not any of the side streets and they needed to prepare for, but when that created a huge issue because we had people driving the wrong way, also entering. So um I will communicate more strongly with them next year in the planning of it. Um and my recommendation is going to be they go left and come around the park this way. Like, so back to Sherman. Um, that was media we. Especially if we kind of nurture the fun time that it is, you know, if we can keep that bit off the highway, it would even be even more fun for.
I will say the the site, the the part about, I was going to agree with you, but about half of the videos and things that I saw on Instagram were people over by Nar and Eatery. And so I, I thought the same thing until I realized that there are a significant number of businesses where people were eating before going out. And so I I do think, like, if Shane's willing to do a one-way on Sherman, then I think we can handle that.
That's what we always used to do. I think that works.
I think it's.
Problem was coming back down Lena the long way. When I, that all of the the fire trucks and ambulances and stuff were waiting because the tail end of the parade was still coming with the highway.
No, I.
And I rode up to the to the intersection of Lena and the highway. At that point, there were two private vehicles waiting to get through going the long way.
Yeah.
It was just, it was chaos.
Yeah.
So I, that was also a communication I gave to them that early last week was that they needed to keep everybody bunched together because we were only allowed C dot only because of the timing of it. When you have work traffic from both directions.
Yeah.
On Sherman, they were very, you know, strict with the fact that we had no longer than thirty-minute delay on the road. And so I indicated that um to the organizers that we needed to stay strictly within that and that they needed to keep everybody moving and together. Well, all of a sudden, I've got all the fire trucks at the end. And then, you know, I was talking to.
Many horses.
Ryan's saying, where's the rest of it? And he goes, they're not even on to Sherman yet. So um. There's, there's work to be done. We can.
Yeah, there is. But it's been, I I think the last one was twenty nineteen. That's the last one I remember being part of. Um, so.
And it was a lot smaller. I think maybe we'll just have to go up the name with the chamber and talk.
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds like Shane's got ideas on what we should do. And I think I just, I just wanted to know, because I was kind of like, I'm not canceling the parade. Like, that was kind of my actual response.
Yeah.
And yeah, and I think communication, you know, to people of what the route will be and where they.
I know.
I, the only other thing I would add, just just in terms of getting it on the record, is that they're probably, it probably be best if we didn't have any walkers. That anybody who wants to be in the parade but doesn't have a bicycle or a vehicle should be on on a flatbed or something. Can be in the back of a.
We have a whole year to plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I I don't think we need to person maybe this.
Because.
So that was cool.
Yeah.
All right, well.
Thanks.
Good, yeah, good deep breath and uh.
But shout out to town staff too, the park.
It was awesome.
Oh, my God, the lighting in the tree, right? The tree looks amazing. Did Steven include like that?
Uh, well, Steven did all the normal stuff. That tree, uh, Chamber and.
Savage.
That's the true search. Yeah. That would make sense.
Yeah, so shout out to them.
Yeah, awesome.
Yeah, really cool.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the town manager's report? Joke.
Bo.
We're talking.
Steve.
Proud.
I might retire.
When is the last time you contributed? It was not long ago.
It it it's been a minute.
Okay, I think it's time for another one from both.
No, man. Preston's on.
Preston's on.
I better go to my writing team.
All right. Anybody have any committee reports?
I'll just make a quick follow-up to what Preston's already said about the last S A B meeting. It was probably one of the better ones I had, maybe the best one I've attended in the three plus years I've been attending. Um, the the list is long, but it's not even inclusive of everything that was agreed upon. There's a series of um action items that the committee has taken on as internal action items. They don't even, aren't even illuminated here. Um, and we've, and and we chose voluntarily, we chose, people volunteered for each of the action items. So hopefully rather than just coming to meetings and just rehashing the same information, they're going to be bringing new juice to these meetings. And again, it's a credit to Preston to help get this kind of back on track. The um, the the one issue that Angela brought up about that's been an ongoing complaint to the committee is lack of a standard process by which they can bring their recommendations to the council. And so one of the mechanisms that you see briefly mentioned here is provide a quarterly progress update to council. So we're looking at Preston to maybe formalize a policy matter slot on a quarterly basis that the S A B can then use to work towards on a quarterly basis and then present, you know, maybe nothing, but but this is their chance to to bring forward issues that they want uh consideration before the council. So that that would help give them a target, quarterly target to work towards and as well an actual formal, you know, seat at the table, so to speak, at at the council meetings. So um, that was positive and hopefully that's that's what comes out of it. And they also agreed to have a S A B liaison representative to the S E B meetings, which I'm currently the council's representative. I think John's the ultimate with Sherrod, he's involved too. Um, I do attend those meetings regularly, partly based on the council. Well, these days I wear the council hat. I used to wear S and P's hat. Uh, so this would be in addition to that. So anyway, um, long story short, it was a good meeting and I think it gave um the current members, including Sheridan, some new juice and look forward to it much, much better.
I I really like the idea of some having an actual slot on the agenda on a quarterly basis for and it could be a rotating member of the board that comes and gives them a right thought, but I think that's a great idea.
Makes them feel more empowered.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great.
Somebody else have some report? Next up, the dinner on Saturday. I hope to see y'all there. I will declare our security. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
I forgot.
Have fun, Polly. Travis.
Bye.
Thanks. See you guys on Saturday. Bye.
Polly, you've got a book in your, in your mailbox, your town hall bits, a gift.
Yay. Thank you. I will check my mail.
Okay.
All right. Bye, guys.
My Alan Rescue dinner was tonight.